And we want to thank all of you all for coming tonight. Man, pretty good crowd here tonight. Uh-oh. Uh-oh. Is there some controversy or something you started sitting?
I don't have my crew sitting here.
Oh, okay. Thank you all for being here tonight and welcome to the September 12th, 2013 Longview City Council meeting. We're going to start our meeting tonight with the prayer and the pledge, and that will be led by Pastor Gary Floyd with the Galilee Baptist Church.
As we pray, eternal mercy for God, Father which art in heaven, we come, God, praising and thanking you for your many blessings. Thank you, God, for bringing us here safely, that we might be able to assemble together and be able to have decisions made to better our city. Oh, Father God, we pray right now that you would touch each of those who are on the council, give them insight and wisdom, that they might be able to make decisions for the betterment of all of our citizens of this city. God, pray that you bless each and every person that is here at the meeting, God, that you might give them a spirit of cooperation, that we might be able to honor those things that you have put before us, Lord, in your holy written. Father God, we ask a special blessing on our children also, that you would keep them safe, Lord, as to begin school and grant them wisdom and knowledge, that they might grow in the nurture and admonition of your word. Bless those city workers who go out, Lord. We pray that you would help them to be able to help our citizens, that we might be able to spread love throughout our city. Bless our entire state, our nation, oh God, and just continue to keep us, and we'll be always careful to give you the glory and give you the praise. In Jesus's name we praise and give thanks. Amen.
As we pray, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, citizen comment. Most of the cards I have are for the, all of them with the exception of one, I think, is for the public hearing on the P and Z items, but I do have a card, and I hope I don't slaughter the pronunciation of your name. Wing Young Yang. Okay. I don't know. Well, I have a speaker card for Quinn Young Yang. There you go. There you go. I hope I didn't mess that up too bad. Okay. Did, oh, did you want to speak tonight?
Uh, no.
Okay. Well, thank you for being here. We'll let you go. Thank you for coming. Okay. All right. Okay. We just want to make sure you were here. All right. Good deal. Okay. I do not have any other speaker cards tonight, so presentation item, presentation of the findings from the preliminary architectural study for the proposed hotel conference center. Kevin Hildchi.
Thank you. And I just wanted to start by saying probably that some of the most important things you should know about me is I've been married to my wife, Charlotte, who's with me tonight for 35 years, which should tell you a couple of things. I know about commitment, and I know when to agree. The second thing you should probably know about me is I have been in Longview since 1980. I founded my business here in 1984. Over the years, I've done significant development in Longview, most exclusively on the south side of Longview, and we still operate our business today, and we're located out by the airport in Elderville. We purchased a piece of land about four years ago on Estes Parkway across from the then-developing or recently opened Walmart, and we bought a franchise for a Marriott product hotel, and we're going to build 100 rooms on that location until the city and county decided to rework the roads down in that area, and that stopped our development. As the roadwork was ending, the city put out an RFP for a conference facility that the city was looking for a private developer to help them build, and the city was going to own. We responded to that RFP. We were selected by the city in that RFP process and began. So, to give you a little, this is the State Highway Department's rendition of the old highway in green here. The road on Estes that was, that connected to Estes that was replaced. This is the new intersection. Let's see if I get this correct. This is the new intersection. Just to kind of orient you to the area, this is Eastman Road. This is Estes Parkway. Interstate 20 runs north and south in this direction, and this branch of Eastman Road connects to Interstate 20 farther down from the site. The Walmart is here, and our site is right here at this new hard corner. This entrance into the property does not exist. It was depicted by DPS, but it does not exist, and this curb cut does not exist today, but the traffic light here exists, and the dedicated turns in both directions off of Estes Parkway do exist for that eventual road into the property. So that kind of orient you as to where our property location is. If you look at the map of Longview and the tax increment reinvestment zone, we're located about here, okay, in this map. This is the facility, an artist's rendition of the facility as, that we have determined we can build on the site. At the request of the city and the RFP, they requested 25,000 square feet. Their desire was to seat 1,000 people for a sit-down meal. The facility does that. The city requested seven breakout spaces. This facility includes 10, three of which are housed inside of the hotel itself, with seven in the conference facility. We were given Texarkana as a sample of the project that the city wanted to build, and the main concern in the city of Texarkana was that if something ever happened and the city owned the facility, how would you split between the developer's hotel and the city conference facility? So the project was designed so that could be done, and the three meeting spaces inside the hotel were, were put in the hotel to meet the brand requirement of Marriott if something like that ever occurred. In addition, the facility can do meal service for up to 1,000 people in one room. This is the artist's rendition of the Marriott branded hotel attached to the conference center. It is, in this rendition, 135 to 150 rooms. The RFP that the city accepted from us was for 150 rooms. It includes a full-service restaurant and club, and an indoor pool, as long as, as well as all the other facilities that go with a Marriott hotel. This project, you know, is a tremendous partnership between a number of different parties. First of all, the city of Longview. The projected cost for the meeting facility as designed today, and the architect will show you more about that in just a moment, is estimated to be $5.5 million. That does not include the land and the road improvements, and it's estimated the additional land needed for the conference facility is going to cost somewhere in the neighborhood of $500,000 to $750,000. And the road improvements, really, I have no idea what those cost. It's simply a question for the city. But I will tell you that out of all the sites we looked at, and we looked at a number, this one takes the least amount of road development by the city because of the existing hard corner, dedicated light, and dedicated turns into the facility. Gregg County is also involved because in our investigation, Gregg County and the city of Longview own a piece of land in this area, and Gregg County has said that they are willing to donate the land to the project, which greatly reduces the cost of land for the city to develop this project. Of course, the area businesses and hotels out there, retail restaurants will reap the benefit of the visitors from out of town, and building 150 rooms, obviously, if we have a function in town that brings 500 people, we can't house all of them at this location. You couldn't build a hotel big enough to house them all at this location, and therefore there'll be overflow rooms for the other hotel owners there. And there are a number of hotels, including, I understand, a new one being developed in the south side of Longview in the near future. And of course, the other partnership is, partner in the partnership is us, private enterprise. Our hotel is estimated to cost approximately $14 million, and that's what we bring to the table. And of course, we believe that in this location, this site is like the elbow of your arm between two segments of development going on to the south of us with Cisco and the Walmart, and to the interstate side of us with the other hotels, Cracker Barrel, the new Denny's that's out there, and the other businesses that have developed between us and the interstate in the last 10 years. So I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce to you the architect, and he said he wanted me to let you know a couple of things about him. He's been married 28 years to the same great lady. He has three kids, two dogs, and a cat. He's a registered architect with 30 years of experience in design and construction, and he's spent 15 years designing hospitality-related projects, and the most important thing is that he used to be thinner and had more hair. So with that, I'll let you welcome Glenn Griggs.
Thank you. I'm Glenn Griggs. I had a client tell me one time, Glenn, you're the kind of guy whose hair doesn't turn gray. It turns loose. So here I am. And I think most of that started back in 2002 when I opened my own office. We've been around. We've, our key employees have been together for 15 years, and you can do the math and figure out pretty quickly that we worked together for a while before we opened our own firm. We chase clients, not projects. We're not here for a specific project. We like to focus on a client and team with them, and we feel like if we could pursue that relationship, then you're going to call us back for other projects. So that's the attitude that we take. We've designed projects for award-winning clients. We've done projects in virtually every industry available, and, oh, look at that. But we specialize in hospitality projects. We've done virtually every level. This hotel that you're looking at, I don't know if you remember a commercial for Homewood Suites called It's Not My Home. We designed the hotel that was in that commercial. This is the entry you pull up, and if you didn't watch the first three seconds of the commercial, you missed it. So that's our national claim to fame. We started doing these several years ago, and Lewisville Convention Center was one of the first ones we did. It's 163 keys or guestrooms and a 20,000-square-foot conference center. We've got outdoor event areas, fireplace, oversized pool and fountains. It was featured in ICF Magazine, which is the type of construction we used. First hotel to take cast-in-place concrete six stories high using insulated concrete forms. It also won our client the best hotel in Texas. This project was sort of the thing everybody wanted to go for after it got built. The economic development director in the city of Lewisville invested in this, hoping that it would bring projects, and three other hotels popped up around it, and they have, I think, six pads around there for retail development. I know two of them have been sold. I think two others, they're looking at purchasers for that. The Garland Conference Center is 150 keys. You can, you can read this. It's, it's also got an outdoor event area. It was the first for Hyatt Place with a conference center in this configuration. We've subsequently designed four more and consulted on a fifth. This one also had pad sites with restaurants being developed out in front of it. So they do seem to bring some additional development. The Texoma Regional Convention Center is in Dennison, again, about the same size, 130 keys, 20,000-square-foot conference center. This one has outdoor patio, fireplace, and pool. Each, each owner, developer seems to want to raise the bar just a little bit. This one actually had rooftop gardens and patios on top, but the contractor gave the guy a price for that, and it doesn't have them anymore. So Texarkana Convention Center, you're familiar with that, and it's got 154 keys, outdoor event patio, fireplace, covered porches, featured in their local magazine, Texarkana the Magazine. It's a lead design conference center, and one of the things I forgot to put on here is this is the first one we did with a brides' room. So I don't know if you all know the developers there, but the wife of one of the owners was very adamant. She didn't really care what we built, as long as it had a brides' room. So it's got a brides' room. And every hotel since then, they've asked us, can I get a brides' room? So we're starting to add brides' rooms. Port Aransas Hotel and Conference Facility is down in, obviously, Port Aransas, 120 mile an hour winds. We're also using ICF there. Interesting thing about it in Port Aransas is it actually pays for itself in three years using ICF. Outdoor patio and pool, capitalized pool because this guy bumped the budget on the pool and patio to $750,000. So that was his party zone. I don't expect Longview's going to want a $750,000 pool and patio, but we can, if that's what you decide you want. Carrollton Hotel Convention Center, 147 keys, 22,000-square-foot conference center, outdoor event patio, fireplace. They bumped it by an infinity-edge pool. I'm not exactly sure how that fits in Carrollton, but we're going to give it to them. They are looking at water recycling, and I'm not going to bore you with water usage of showers and toilets, but water savings is a big thing in their minds. So currently, we are planning a relatively large, energy-efficient hotel, and we have two other hotels in the range of Longview, 140 keys, 20,000, and then one has an additional 15,000 event space. Now, I'm basically trying to tell you, we've done a few of these. Okay? So Longview Conference Center, when Mr. Hildchi called and said what you wanted, and you liked Texarkana and parts of it, then I said, I think we can help you. We can get these things in here. You see event space out here, outdoor event space. We've got fire pits. The pool, he told you, on the other side's the hotel part. We've also got, I haven't turned this around, but in the backside is enough room for adding the facilities that are in the hotel. So if there is a separation, we can always add those amenities that are in the hotel right now. Wouldn't be hard to do. The side area, access from Estes and the new intersection coming through. Come, turn right in. You're facing right at the new conference center. And the welcome center, right here, you're just straight on it, right there. Come into the port of chair. It's also going to have a separate entry, so you can come right into that without having to come in if you want to. Access to the fire pit area. We've got meeting rooms out here in different configurations. Lots of green space, parking, 135-room full-service Marriott branded hotel. Now, we've got 135 laid out here, but it wouldn't be hard to turn this corner and go ahead and get an additional 15 rooms. I think we have room here at the end to add two bays. So the basic layout, we try to get access between the hotel and the conference center directly, not going down the hallway with the conference center down at the end. We try to make it act like a total facility, all integrated. Meeting spaces are here. We've got breakout rooms here. You'll see different configurations. Got a couple of boardrooms here that look out onto the patio area. We've got patio area on this side looking out over the outdoor event space. And we show a couple of different ways these things can be set up. We've got classroom-style seating here. If the dining's set up, you can do table service from the back, or you can set up a buffet. You'll see a picture of that later on. And all these pictures that you're going to see are not just Googled off the website. They're, they're actually off hotels that we've designed. So these are pictures of how people are using the hotels we've designed. So the ballroom, you can see different setups, the way people have done them for various The breakout rooms, they can be set up in a sort of a dialogue setup like that where you're facing each other, or a boardroom. And what we've seen lately are people developing executive boardrooms. They upgrade the tables, the chairs, the finishes. If we'd pulled out a little bit, you'd see a couple of chandeliers up here as well. So some of these boardrooms are really getting to be very nice locations for businesses to have retreats. Brides' rooms, I mentioned that. I say grooms don't rent wedding receptions, reception venues, brides do. So this is one set up where the buffet was in the pre-function area. So they have the meetings and the dining out here in the, in the ballroom, and you'll come out for the buffet. The, this one has a dining area set up in the pre-function, and it looks like a wedding is set up outside on the patio. So after that, you come in and you eat. And then dining room here, this is Texarkana, for those of you who are familiar with it. It's set up basically, I'm assuming there's a bar somewhere, a little bit of a glare, but there's a bar somewhere in there, and then these are bar top tables for people to stand around and converse. Oh, also, great places for piano players. I've seen all these, piano players, cash bars, cigar rolling stations in the pre-function. I mean, sky's the limit. It's up to your event planner and, and what they can come up with. Outdoor spaces, we've got gardens, we've got patios next to water features here, harbors, anything to make people feel comfortable. They want a place to go to wind down after a long day. We've got fireplaces, again, Texarkana. These are under a covered porch there that you'll see. This is flipped around the other way. The fireplace looking back at the covered area. Fireplace here, this is in Lewisville. It's, it's got a little arbor over it as well, but this one is, they actually rent this outdoor space to people that want to come out and, and watch TV. So they have groups rent it and for ballgames and such as that. So just because you're building a, a building, doesn't mean you can't rent the event space, the lawn outside, or the patio outside. There are lots of opportunities for revenue on these things if you have a, a really good event manager. And then last thing, I have to put these on, I probably should have deleted it because I haven't eaten since breakfast, but food and beverage manager is vital to one of these projects. You don't want convention chicken in one of these. These are, I think, buffalo sliders that they come up with. So, you know, a lot of these will get a chef involved. So you really get quality food when you go to these things, and I think this one is some kind of sea bass and quinoa. So like I said, it's, it's not, it's not convention chicken or convention fish, you know. It's, y'all got a long night ahead of you, and I apologize for this being first. But the point is, food and beverage, you can really do a knock, knock-down job, just do, do a great job on the food and beverage. So anyway, then a couple of things I found about food, that it just, you got to make sure you run it correctly, you know, and you run it well. You get the right people in there, and you can really, really have a very successful project. But I've been, I've been interested to see the manner in which the community grows up around these projects, because some of these projects, when we got there, is out in the middle of nowhere, and you're trying to figure out, what are we doing out here? You know, and then you build it. All of a sudden, there's a pad site sold, there's a pad site sold, there's a restaurant, there's another hotel going up. You know, so they, they do achieve what you're looking for, because like Mr. Hildchi said, if you're going to have a 700, 800-person event or 1,000-person event, there's only 130 to 140 rooms. So they're not staying at the hotel. All right? They're staying at an adjacent hotel. So there's going to be more, or the ones that you've got are going to fill up a little more. All right? And then the restaurants, they got to go somewhere and eat, because they're not going to eat three meals a day in a conference center. So they're going to have something somewhere outside the conference center. So anyway, and then the last, the last slide, this one is the project that was featured in the commercial that I told you about. But the neat thing to me on this one was this company picked this hotel, this image, it wasn't for sale. They sell hotels, and they picked this image for their advertisement, and it wasn't for sale. But I liked the, the, I liked the message, relationships drive results, and that's sort of the basis of what we do. So anyway, that's it for me. If you've got any questions, let me know.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay, Mr. Hildchi.
Well, that, that, that really is the presentation. We completed that, our portion of the initial pre-development study, showing that the, the project that the city requested can be built. We've given the estimated budget on the cost of that. It's in line with what was in our original request for proposal, and we're now looking for the city to decide whether they'd like to take the next step and move forward.
Okay. Questions? Question, Mr. Hildchi, go ahead.
So why, if we asked for 150, you gave us 135?
I'm sorry?
Wasn't the RFP for 150 rooms?
Our, our RFP answer was for 150, and in our presentation, we said we were, this is for 135 to 150 rooms. The reason we went and scaled that back and left it as a range is because the feasibility study that was done by the Chamber of Commerce.
Is the Source Strategies Incorporated feasibility study?
Right. In there, it was done for 175 rooms, but in the study, they say that communities the size of Longview generally don't develop hotels over 135 rooms, and that properties larger than that are in major metropolitan areas. So we went, we're, we are still willing to build the 150 rooms of our, that we submitted in our request for proposal, but that's really going to be a decision between us and the city in the next phase.
Yep. And I think the study showed, or the example showed, I mean, there was nothing over 150. And I know that's been a big bone with some people, but I personally feel that that's part of the negotiation, so.
I agree.
Mr. Allen?
Mr. Hildchi, that food looks a lot better than what I've got at convention meetings.
I, I debate that. I've seen you in action, Mr. Allen.
To kind of respond to that, if I could.
It might not have been at the convention, but I have seen you in action.
Originally, originally, I came to Longview in 1980 to be the Assistant General Manager of the Holiday Inn out of Estes Parkway, and the, my major responsibility there was Teddy's Restaurant and Club. In 1981, Teddy's Restaurant was chosen as one of the top 100 hotel restaurants in the United States by Hospitality Magazine, and that, that was a real feather in the cap of the community at that time. And one of the things that the communities lacked since the loss of that hotel is a full-service hotel.
Yes, sir. The question is, what city participation have you had in these other areas, these other locations that you mentioned?
You know, I got that question earlier today, and I would, I would say my response is, have you ever played the game Trump? It's a, it's a game that was Parker Brothers brought out some years ago, and it was, it was based on Trump, the investor, and the only rule to the game is there are no rules to the game. Okay? And as many communities has built these, there are probably that many different structures for how they have. for how they have set it up. In most instances, not, the majority, but not most, the majority of instances, the community owns the facility. And the reason the community owns the facility is because private investors would build these if they could-
When you say facility, you mean the total-
No, the conference facility.
The conference facility.
Conference facility, I'm sorry. Owns the conference facility because if these made great sense without support of the entire community, developers would be building them themselves, and they're not. They are very difficult to ramp up, and expensive on the front end, and most developers just aren't willing to make that kind of investment and take that kind of risk when they can build a smaller hotel. And that's why smaller hotels have really come into being since the 90s, because they're less risky investment, higher returns on cash.
Okay. Any other questions?
I noticed that one of the slides showed that the proposed location is almost in the middle of the TERS. So, do you have any, let me go back a little bit. Your investment, your group's investment is 14 million, correct?
That's right.
Okay, and so, the estimated city participation is approximately 5.5 million? Is that what was on that slide?
That's the cost of the, that's the cost of the facility as you see it today, yes.
Okay, so, from a revenue perspective, and it being in the TERS, do you happen to have any projections as to what that's gonna look like, as far as like what it could do for the community?
Stabilized income on the hotel is about $5 million a year in gross room revenue. That's not total revenue, that's room revenues, and that's what the city collects occupancy tax on, hotel occupancy tax on. The conference facility, our initial projections, and understand, I'm in the hotel business, and I have, I have background in food and beverage for many years, but I have thousands of hotels that I can base my revenue projections on for my hotel, not very many places where I can base my projections on the conference center. So they're a little more dubious than my hotel projections. The conference facility projections without debt, service, and property taxes show that facility losing money in the first two years, and really stabilizing in the third and fourth year, and beginning to make money the third year, and fairly sizable profits in year four and five, you know. And that's the real, and that, those estimates are based on the fact that we're gonna have the sales support of the city through the Convention and Visitor Bureau, and those kinds of operations within the city. If you're doing that alone, the expense, as a developer, the expenses are higher, because I have to hire more salespeople, and the risks are greater. So, again, that's why you don't see private developers building these facilities, even in major metropolitan areas.
So, from a CVB perspective, the expectation is that our CVB would play a role in that in a perfect world, but if it didn't, then you would have to hire someone?
Yes, we would hire people for our sales staff inside the hotel, okay? The city's Convention and Visitor Bureau promotes all the facilities within the city and gets people to come to the city of Longview. You know, they're doing that today for Ma'Kop, and we would expect them to do that for this facility as well, if the city owned it. And that's what was presented to us in the RFP. So that was naturally our assumption. In discussions with the city, we built a welcome center in here. The current welcome center, I think, for the city is housed within the Chamber of Commerce in downtown. It's not easy to find for people driving up and down Interstate 20, which is a major entrance to our community from people visiting, and, you know, so that's a natural fit. And we would expect that the city in some way, shape, or form would staff their welcome center. Okay?
Fair enough. Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Allen?
One short question. Is there an operational cost to the city on this proposed facility?
Again, that's all part of what happens in the next phase of negotiations. What was discussed with us was, the city would own the facility, and they would contract with the hotel operator to operate the facility and pay a management fee. And as part of that management fee, the operator would have to take on the burden of any losses out of the, out of the facility itself.
Okay, let me wait one second. Okay. Did you have something, Gary?
Yes.
And then I'll come back to you. Go ahead.
Mr. Hilti, what's the construction time for a project of this nature?
Eight months to a year.
Eight months to a year.
Yeah, and that, that would be after the city made the decision to build. And that's not where we're at. Where at, the city's decision point is, do we go forward and determine exactly what this facility looks like, and exactly what it costs to build?
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Man.
Okay. Mr. Frost?
In the discussion about location-
Yes, sir.
I know it's, Mr. Griggs said something about somewhere around the middle of nowhere, and others were like, well, like Garland and Lewisville, that's a metropolitan area. Does it make any difference where you put it? Like, propose the Texarkana and us?
Yes, it does. It needs to be near access to major transportation entrances into the community where it's gonna, the community is going to serve. Okay? And that's the beauty of this location. As you leave this facility, let's see if I can get the mouse to work now. There it is. As you leave this facility, you have a dedicated traffic light here, okay? You can get to North Longview through either Estes Parkway or Eastman Road. You can get access to Interstate 20 in two different directions as well, okay? And the other major feeder into the city, of course, are communities like Henderson, Carthage, Tatum. They come up this road, so, and all the traffic from the airport, obviously, is the other major entrance to Longview for outside visitors, will be coming from here. So, we think the location here on the south side is essential to this kind of a facility, because you want people coming in from Shreveport, Tyler, Dallas, for events that are gonna be located here. You want them to have easy access in and out of the facility, and when you start feeding a thousand people, you need to move them quickly when the event's over out of, out of the location. And we think the access here is key to the success of this particular facility.
Is the one in Texarkana on I-30?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yeah, it is visible from I-30, and multi-directional out of there, and there is a, there is a mall next door to it now.
On Lewisville, is it on I-35?
Do you want to answer that?
Yes. Yes, in fact, it was six stories. The owners insisted on it being six stories, so you could see it as you're heading north on I-35.
Okay, thank you.
Let me counsel, I know we've got a couple other questions, but let's, listen, the deal now is, do we move, and how do we move this project forward? Okay? And let's, let's go right to the main factor, how you plan to pay for this? Okay? And, and really and truly, we have to do our due diligence on how we pay for that. Okay? We don't know today, sitting here, first of all, that, that TERS is set up in a legal fashion, that we can actually use that as a funding mechanism.
Yes, sir.
Okay? We don't know today whether or not the hotel motel occupancy tax, what of that we can possibly use, okay? The next thing is, do we do a certificate of obligation debt? Okay? Or do we do a general obligation debt, which would require voter approval, which either way would require a tax increase of some form to pay for this? Okay? So, our, our next step has to be, you know, to going back to the table and doing our due diligence to look at how we pay for this. Because it's not in your interest, or the interest of the city, or the citizens of Longview, for us to kick this thing around. We gotta know how we're gonna pay for it.
Right.
Okay? So, my, my recommendation would be to move this forward, that we explore, we have to determine legally if TERS is an option, okay? And then, and for the, the community doesn't, doesn't know a lot about this tax reinvestment zone. That particular zone is set up where we can actually set up an organization to borrow money to fund projects such as this, based on future taxable income. Correct? Okay. So, we, we have to determine that the way this is set up currently, that we can do that. So, I'm, I'm gonna suggest that, that staff comes back to counsel with a review of the different options that we have for funding, and then we up here decide how we're gonna propose funding that, so we can move the project forward.
You know-
Okay, just one second, I have two other people first. I had Richard first, and then Sidney. Go ahead, Richard.
Well, I just wanna acknowledge what you said. This is obviously where we're headed with regard to however, whatever happens tonight, whatever the further discussions we have, we have some big decisions to make.
Sure.
And a lot, a lot of things that we need to decide. I have a couple more questions about the project, though, if you don't mind.
Okay.
I understand, I actually read the 105-page study that you referenced this morning. I just found out about it, and, and a couple things I wanted to clarify. So, it's a courtyard Marriott? Is it a Marriott courtyard property?
That is the proposed franchise today.
Okay. Right, which is great, I love that. That's where, I travel a lot, and I really like those properties. A lot of those have been remodeled, as you probably know, recently, and have moved away from a full-service hotel to the, you know, the little barista kind of thing with the Starbucks coffee machine and all that, and a very limited breakfast menu with no lunch or dinner. Does the proposal you have include a facility that will in fact serve three meals a day?
Yes, it does.
Okay, great, that's good. All right, and then, you referenced the fact that, one of the findings was that cities our size typically have smaller facilities, that's why you went to 135. And I'm looking at, on page two, it says the key finding is, developing and opening a 175-unit prominently branded hotel property, this site should generate an unleveraged pre-tax return on invested capital approaching 15% with an ROE of 35%. Is that enough?
You know, that is enough if the projections are correct, yes.
That's your concern, that the projections are not there? Okay. All right, and, and then, so, interesting, so one of the things here also is $120,000 per room, and so, 100, so when I do the math on a 100-room hotel, that's 12 million. So, am I doing something wrong here if 135 bids is-
They typically don't build hotels, and my estimates are based on Marriott recent numbers on what it costs to build a courtyard, and our experience on what it costs to build in East Texas as opposed to national numbers like those.
Like the ones you, Mr. Griggs, and you put up there?
This is the first time working with Glenn Greggs for us, because we typically haven't built this kind of facility in the past, okay? Our last construction was a 115-room Residence Inn in Albuquerque, New Mexico, which we own and operate.
Right.
And it has no, it, the largest meeting space seats 50 people, and it has that and a boardroom.
So, a little different facility than what we're talking about.
Right.
But you still feel like that 5.5 million's the righteous number for the, for the-
For the conference center, yes.
Okay, that's right, because this is hotel, this is hotel, you're right.
That's Mr. Griggs.
Okay, this is hotel. All right, and then, so again, the, the study, as I took, took away from this, was that it actually recommended this larger facility, and that there would be enough return on investment.
They didn't recommend it, they said it's economically feasible.
Right, so I bring it back up, because you referenced it, so, you know, on the one hand, you think it's a good thing to reference, but on the other hand, you disagree with some of the findings, and therefore have come up with a smaller facility because of that. Is that, is that somewhere-
I actually used, if you look at our financial projections, which we provided the city for the hotel facility, I actually used their occupancy and average rates out of the report, even on the lower number of rooms, where if you read in the report, it says if the number of rooms is lowered, they give a higher occupancy-
Sure.
...basis to the project, so.
Which, that makes sense to me. Okay, thank you for answering those questions.
Okay. Mr. Allen?
Mr. Hilti, you mentioned earlier that you had been involved with a previous Holiday Inn, which I understand, we're going through a process to buy that property and make it marketable. Now, I understand you own the land here, but lands always can be sold. If you had a choice now, would you, which location would you prefer? This location, or the one where the previous Holiday Inn was? Which would you prefer?
This one, and, and again, I'll reference the study, there were two studies done by the chamber, one for each location. He referenced the 35% return on this. That return was, I believe, 17%. And so, there was a significant difference between the returns from this report by the same company for the two different locations.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Casham?
I do agree with the mayor as far as due diligence, but I need to ask this, just for my own clarity.
Sure.
You know, I know you have some experience doing this, so tell me, do you have any suggestions? What were you thinking, how would we fund this as a community? What were you thinking from a city's perspective?
Well, we were thinking he was gonna put all the money. He's thinking.
Not with a conscience, not with a convention center. But seriously, you know, how are you expecting us to be able to fund this as a city? Because we obviously want to do it, because the city issued the RFP, so this is something we're serious about.
You know, obviously, I can't answer for the city.
Right.
Okay? And I don't know what funding mechanisms are necessarily available to the city. I can tell you what I, what I do know. And what I do know is that the city takes in between 37 and 38 million dollars a year in revenue in the hotels that are here, okay? The city, last year, I believe, passed a 2% hot funds increase that was earmarked for a facility like this. And, you know, the, the quick math that I do on that is that the city's bringing in somewhere around $760,000 a year on the 2% tax that they put in place to build and fund a facility like this, and those funds are earmarked under the special provision of that law.
Let me, let me just clarify something on that. Actually, if you go back and read the document closely, it was to be spent on the Ma'Kop complex to build there. So, if council starts looking at you, and that's some of the things we gotta do.
I'm sure.
We told the voters that that's where it was gonna be used. So, if we're gonna change that, I mean, that, again, is part of the due diligence process, but if you look at it, it was meant for, at that facility.
Again, just to answer your question-
Please.
If you take the cost of the facility, and we estimate that by, high-end, by the time you buy the land and build the roads and do everything else, the city could be in this for 7.5 million dollars. Okay? Today's bond rate, I understand what the city is about 2%, and if you amortize that over a 20-year period, that payment comes to about $475,000 a year. The 2% is bringing in $760,000 a year. I think the city, just with the 2%, has the ability to fund a project like this. Now, I understand it was presented, or it was initially passed to be where Ma'Kop is today, but it was this kind of a facility, and, and it wasn't me that decided to accept the RFP to move the facility away from Ma'Kop, it was the city.
That's right.
So, I can't answer those questions, but I do understand that's all part of it.
It's important for us to put the cards on the table, because that's just not an automatic thing, oh, we can just go use that. I mean, there's, there's due diligence we have to do.
Absolutely.
Or we will not ever get the support of voters again. When we tell them we're gonna do something, we do something different. So, we're gonna be very clear about that.
Right. And then, you know, additionally, just on our estimates of the revenue off this project, the 9% hot funds that this location is gonna pay will be somewhere between 400 and $450,000 a year.
Thank you for answering my question.
Thank you, sir, thank you. Okay, counsel, anything else? I think, again, it's the, you know, staff, it's in staff's court now to do the due diligence and to come back to us as soon as you can, next 30 days? Is that reasonable? Okay? All right, thank you very much. I mean, it's a nice-looking facility, Mr. Hilti, we appreciate you. Let's go to the consent agenda, anything counsel like to pull for separate consideration? If not, may I have a motion? I have a motion. Second in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Budget item, an ordinance adopting a 2013 tax rate and levying said rate, Ms. Angela Cohen?
Good evening. This item is to adopt the 2013 property tax rate. The proposed tax rate is made up of 12.09 cents for debt service, 38 cents for operations and maintenance, totaling 50.09 cents, which remains constant over a three-year period. This ordinance is for your consideration of approval.
Okay. Questions? If not, may I have a motion?
If approved.
Have a motion, and second in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Zoning and public hearing items. A, public hearing, consider application Z-1308. Hello, Mr. Shirley?
Lou, Mayor Dean, how are you doing today? Getting ready for winter.
Yeah, getting ready for hunting season, huh?
Can't wait.
Can't wait.
All right.
Let's see, okay. Excuse me, the first item, application Z1308, located in the Glover subdivision located at 1301 Alpine Road, is a request from general retail to heavy commercial. It's here on the, the corner of Glover and Alpine. As you can see, there's a commercial in and around the area. The land use plan is designated as medium intensity business, however, with the adjacency of the commercial zoning in this corridor, it is consistent with the surrounding uses. It, in the past, has been used as a auto repair facility, indoor auto repair, and also a detail shop. What they're trying to do is expand that to offer autos for sale also. With that, they need the heavy commercial zoning. Planning and zoning commission and staff do recommend approval, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? If not, this item requires a public hearing, public hearing is now open, I do not have any speaker cards on this item, is anyone here like to speak to this? If not, the public hearing is closed, may I have a motion? Have a motion, and second in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion passes. Item B, to consider special application, a public hearing, number S1302.
Thank you, Mayor Dean, this is for a specific use permit for a restaurant with private club in general retail zoning, this is out at the Town Crossing Shopping Center. It is zone general retail, general retail all to the, to the south of there. The future land use map does designate it for high-intensity businesses, definitely consistent with the land use plan. It is gonna be located in this outbuilding out in front of the Coles, kinda in the parking lot area. The purpose for specific use permits for this type of use are to ensure that there's no negative impacts if there's potentially residential areas in and around. In this case, there's no such residential, so it doesn't pose a problem. Planning and zoning commission and staff do recommend approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? If not, this item, uh, speak up, Sidney.
Are you speaking, excuse me, okay. Are you talking about one small area inside this complex?
Yes, it's gonna be one of the tenant lease spaces.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, this item requires a public hearing, the public hearing is now open, anybody like to speak to this matter? If not, the public hearing is closed, may I have a motion?
Approve.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Item C, consider application S1303.
Thank you, Mayor Dean, the applicant, Mr. Hip, is requesting a specific use permit for a restaurant with drive-through service located in a general retail zoning district. This is located along Gilmer Road, just north of the Green Oak intersection. You've got general retail all along this area. The purpose for the specific use permit for drive-through windows is in those instances where you're in and around residential areas, it gives us an opportunity to make sure that that additional impact of a drive-through is not gonna pose any problems with the surrounding residential area. In this location, you've got businesses all in and around, you do have undeveloped area mostly around that, so I don't, I don't feel that there's gonna be any impact. I would like to bring your attention, though, that there was a person that, that came out to the P&amp;Z meeting and did raise some, some questions about the impact, and believe they own this building, or they were representing the owner of this building right here, which is, I believe, currently vacant. They were concerned, they brought their concerns about the chicken smell that potentially might happen, which, you know, that's always, you know, is a potential. I know when Walmart first opened up on Gilmer Road, we had that issue. That, yeah, bad thing for some, good thing for others, you know.
Okay, all right. Any questions? Mr. Gary, you got a question?
Oh, no.
Oh, you sitting there with your hand up, okay. Got anything about that fried chicken?
I got that fried chicken.
I might have some too. Okay, this requires a public hearing, public hearing is now open. I have a card from Ms. Jean Whitley.
Whiteley.
Whiteley, okay.
Yes, we received this map in the, we live in Wood Creek addition. And our house is the first house on the left as you enter that addition. And I want to know, it shows that that corner, I wanna know what they're gonna do with that land back there? If they're gonna cut it down, or if they're gonna sell it, or what they're gonna do with it?
Okay.
Because our property backs up to that. Yeah, we live at 203 Wood Creek Drive, and we have a question, even all the neighbors do, as to how far that is gonna go back. It shows on this case number S1303 that it will not even come there, but after speaking with the guy that was doing the survey, says it goes all the way to the creek. So, we wanna know if that's gonna be a long driveway going in there, or if it's gonna be, just how big is it gonna be? Is it gonna interfere with our homes? 'Cause would they all back up to that street, to that, that land?
I, I don't have the site plan in the, in the overhead, but the, the...
I have one right here.
Yes, that is, that is the plot plan. And if you look here, this, this green outline, their development is only gonna go to about right here, about three-quarters of the property, the rest of it, all of this is gonna remain as undisturbed, they're gonna maintain that solid vegetation. It's gonna have a center driveway come in, and then it'll just wrap around driveway. It's, it's not gonna be like the one on Judson where they've got the canopy and the, the order stations like at Sonic, it's just gonna be, yeah, it's just...
A drive-through?
Well, it's gonna be a drive-through and a, and a seating area, it's just be a little smaller footprint, but they're not, they're not utilizing the entire...
Are they going to, on this bottom thing, are they going to put up a privacy fence there?
No, ma'am, let me move...
Well, I ask you why?
They're, they're a significant distance from, from the residential area, there's at least 100 feet between this corner and this corner over here, so it's not required. Now, this, this vegetative, this solid vegetative buffer is gonna remain.
Oh, with it? Okay, that's what I wanna know.
Yeah, they're, this, where this pointer is, that's gonna be about the edge of the parking lot.
Well, that, that will come up to our property, it's the first house here on the left.
There's, there's gonna be, let's see. You're right here, this, there's about 100 or so feet in between your property and the corner of this property, and then they're gonna be up in this area, there's still gonna be a, a difference there.
Okay, thank you very much, and thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Whiteley, excuse me.
Whiteley.
I got it this time. I got a speaker card from Mary Savage Hip. Ms. Hip, did you wanna speak to this item at all? Okay, ma'am?
Yes, that's, I'm satisfied with it, if it comes any further, I won't offense.
Okay. Ms. Hip?
Good evening, Mayor Dean and council members, I'm in support, I'm here to support the new Chicken Express restaurant to be built in this site of, I'm from 2102 Judson, and the site's gonna be 2702. I'm also the wife of Charlie Hip and co-owner of the property that we're discussing this evening.
Okay.
We opened Chicken Express on Judson Road over five years ago, and we're so grateful for our customers and for the success that we've had on Judson Road. We're really blessed to be in Longview, and we're looking forward to having another store in the north side of town. We plan on leaving, like Michael discussed, 100 feet of that, is, we're trying not to touch it at all, but there are some pines that need to come down before they fall down. But the, we don't plan on putting a privacy fence there because the green zone, we want it to remain just like it is for the animals. I know this was discussed last time, a concern about some foxes or animals that may live there, so we wanna leave that for them.
Okay.
And we employ about 25, 30 people, we're little, but we're really happy to be here and this is our home and...
Well, we're glad y'all here too.
We wanna work here, thank you.
We appreciate y'all.
And some, thank you, sometimes that chicken smells pretty good.
It does.
So, we're looking forward to helping our city grow by building and operating another Chicken Express restaurant here in town, so I look forward to your support and your patronage. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Mr. Charlie, you wanna follow that, or are you in good shape? I don't blame you. Okay, that's the last speaker card I have. Does anybody else wanna speak to this matter? Yes, sir. State your name, and we'll get you to fill out a speaker card after we finish.
David Ray.
Okay.
I own all of the land, if I can get this to work, well, I can't.
Behind it?
There you go, from here all the way back here and backing up to their addition. Okay, so that's, I almost, I surround him on the north side and on the east side of his property completely. And I like their operations, I like the way he's taking care of his business, I have absolutely no problem with him being there and doing this project, I'm, I'm very happy with it.
Okay.
And if anybody's gonna be affected, it's gonna be me, it's not gonna be really that much of anybody else.
Okay, well, thank you for being here.
You bet, thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, any, anybody else? If not, the public hearing is closed, may I have a motion?
Approve.
Have a motion, second in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion passes. Michael, we're gonna have item D, public hearing, consider application PD1305.
Thank you, Mayor, this is a, an amendment to PD1105 to adjust some lot lines, amend setbacks and allow for a clubhouse with parking lot and swimming pool. This is for the Enchanted Hills subdivision. Phase one is already completed and there's several homes under construction. As they started looking at phase two, they, they determined that some of the need was for a little bit larger lot, so they're not increasing the density, they're actually decreasing the density of the subdivision a little bit and just kinda stretching some of the lots out a little bit. Also, the main change is, this area down here originally was just gonna be an HOA area, they had thoughts of doing a clubhouse and pool, but they weren't completely decided, so they didn't make it part of the PD. But since they're gonna do that, and that is so different than what we normally have, especially in a residential area, we felt that they need to amend the PD to include that. And in the, in the information, there is some guidelines as far as the, and you can kinda see the box that they have as far as the building area. You know, it's gonna be a typical, you know, small residential-style clubhouse, a pool, and then there is a little bit of parking area that will be around it for those people that need to drive to it, but it's gonna be for the, for the HOA area, for the, for the association. So, this is definitely in line with what planned developments are for, and, and for this type of development, the ones that we've seen that have swimming pools and clubhouses are a great asset to the area. Planning and zoning commission did recommend approval as well as staff, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
If not, this item requires a public hearing, I have a speaker card for item D, Joe Hart. Are you here just to answer questions, Joe?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any questions to Mr. Hart? Is there anybody else that'd like to speak to this matter? If not, the public hearing is closed, may I have a motion?
Approve.
Have a motion?
Second.
A second in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Item E, consider application PD1306.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Woolley is requesting to rezone from single-family SF4 and general retail to a planned development general retail to allow for a convenience store with self-service fuel, some minor auto repair, and a restaurant with a drive-through window, and also to allow for an existing single-family home that he is proposing to leave. This is the site plan, this is currently, let me see if I can go to the aerial, should see where we're talking about, this is an existing, I think it's called the Alpine Road Exxon facility that was a, you know, minor auto repair and service station for a number of years. What they're proposing to do, go backwards, basically, it's sitting right in here, they're gonna encroach back into the neighborhood, and that's why we decided to go with the planned development, so that way we could show the neighbors what they're doing. You know, that's one of the questions that we tend to have with these kinda developments is, what are you gonna do? That kinda zoning opens the door to too much than what we're really wanting. And this is the site plan, self-serving fueling station, the, the auto repair, it's not really auto repair, what they're proposing to have is the inspection station, which is one of the big parts of the business at the current location, and then also wrapping around to have the drive-through window. Because of the location, it kinda one of the harrier intersections in town, we did minimize the impact with the, with a single driveway here and then a low-impact driveway on the residential street here with some landscaping and buffering all the way around, and then he is, in fact, gonna retain this home as a rental buffer also. So, we've definitely taken care of through the, the site design, any impact that there should be on the adjacent residential areas. At the P&amp;Z meeting, we didn't have anybody that showed up in opposition, actually, we had somebody, Mr. McCorder, whose family owns the business across the street, was in support of it, felt that it would be a great addition to the area with the, with the amenities it's gonna provide. So, we, we do recommend approval, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? If not, this item requires a public hearing, public hearing is now open, I do not have any speaker cards, anyone like to speak to this matter? If not, public hearing is closed, may I have a motion?
Approve.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. And finally, item F, consider application PD1307.
Thank you, Mayor. This, the applicant, Newcrest Image, is requesting a rezone from general retail to planned development general retail for a five-story hotel conference center located on North Hawkins Parkway, on the north side of Hawkins Parkway and west of Fourth Street. This is kinda their projected site plan, this is gonna be their driveway onto Hawkins. Part of the purpose for the planned development is general retail typically has a three-story maximum on height. They felt that because of the addition of the conference center in the location, they needed to maximize the density of the property. We felt that the conference center was a great addition and warranted them the ability to go higher rather than go out, sprawl out the property with the types of development that are occurring, you know, you do have commercial zoning in and around the area, we felt it's just more appropriate rather than just doing a straight commercial zoning. It fits in with the comprehensive plan and the, and the adjacent zoning, they're minimizing the driveway access onto Hawkins, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, do recommend approval.
Questions? Mr. Allen.
Mr. Charlie, do you know how many rooms they're planning on?
Yes, 124 rooms with 6,115 square feet of meeting rooms.
Any other questions?
Did you see where Brandon was?
Oh.
Uh, Hilton Garden Inn.
Garden, okay. Mr. Sher, Garrett, go ahead.
Mr. Shirley, you said it was gonna be three stories, but you were gonna amend it to go higher?
Yes, the, the zoning there has a maximum allowance of three stories, and what they're wanting to do is to go five stories, so rather than rezone it to commercial, to kinda open the door for other more intrusive uses, we felt the planned development was, was a better, better approach.
Five stories, okay. How many rooms is he expecting to be at that particular?
124.
124 rooms.
Okay.
And it's a little different product than what was talked about, it's not gonna have the restaurant and stuff like that, little, little smaller scale.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? Okay, this item requires a public hearing, the public hearing is now open, I have a card from Mark Pressner, did you wanna speak, or are you here to answer questions?
Answer questions.
Okay. Any question to Mr. Pressner? Is it Priest or Pressner?
Priest.
I thought so. Okay. Anybody else like to speak to this matter? If not, public hearing is closed, may I have a motion?
Approve.
Have a motion, and second in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bring some more of these good projects, buddy. They are. Well, go ahead, Mr. Frost. Okay, moving District Four ahead. All right, action items, A, considering ordinance amending the budget for the 2013-14 fiscal year. Who's gonna do that? Mr. Willard.
Mayor and council, this, actually, item A and B will be really considered together, although you'll do separate votes on that, but this is the first one, A is an amendment to the budget for a million 354,500 in order for the city to enter into a development participation agreement for the extension of Fourth Street going north from Hawkins. You'll see a, the roadway there that is the proposed extension, it'll be about six-tenths of an acre, a five-lane roadway that'll extend Haw, Fourth Street straight north. The participation agreement will call for the developer to participate to the tune of $2,234,500. City participation would be a million 354,500.
Questions? Go ahead, Ms. Smith.
Now, Mr. Willard, this project, I think initially we talked about a million dollars as what the city expenditure was gonna be last time we had a conversation. But at this point now, Sean, can you put that map back up there? Oh, but anyway, what I'm trying to get to, Mr. Willard, what value add is this for the citizens of Longview to do this Fourth Street project?
Well, there's several. The first one is that the city would, and would be getting a, you know, six tenths of a mile of five-lane road, major thoroughfare for about, for a million, what, a million 354? And the developer's gonna fund the $2,234. So you're getting basically a, you know, three and a half million dollar road for a million 345, or 354.
Okay.
And then secondly, the developer that it opens up will add to the taxable value of the tax base.
Okay, great.
And sales taxes.
Are we, are we responsible for the utilities at that locate, at that road also?
The utilities associated with, inside the development will be borne by the developer, not the city of Longview.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, just a second. I'll come back, Sydney. Go ahead, go, no, no, go ahead.
Would you go back one slide? The, we start out 3 million. The contingency, Mr. Willard, would you give us an idea? That's a big word, $452,000.
Well, Mr. Bonds might be able to explain contingencies better than I.
I, I think I can. Okay. Every time we do a project, there is a 15% contingency fee put into the, to the project. And that's in, and like you well know, Ms. Allen, you've been here quite a while. That's, that is always put in, in the event that there's some unknown something that, I mean, I'll, I'll go to the Green Street underpass. We're probably, y'all like that, huh? Probably it's a good thing we had a contingency there because there was gremlins up underneath there none of us knew about. And so that is always, I mean, our big hope is, that project being all virgin timberland property, we don't have that, okay? So that's always the case.
If they come in lower, will the city's participation be reduced?
Yes.
All right, now, we understand the land, there's no cost on the land to the city, is that correct? I mean, the land will be donated by the private individual.
Now, there's a, a portion of that that, depending on exactly where the road is surveyed in, that we would have to purchase possible right of way, that that would be on the city. But the developer's part of it, he would provide that right of way.
You're talking about where it comes into Hawkins Parkway?
Yes, sir.
Just a small, little, little niche there on the corner?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else have anything? Mr. Richard?
I'd just like to, to speak in favor of this. I think it's a really good idea. This is where a developer, Mr. Van Dusen, and the city, and the city manager worked well together because this project grew from where it began. Because once it was obvious that this type of street could be built, then the feasibility, feasibility study showed that an enormous number of people are gonna use this road. So that's why it grew from a relatively small project to a project that we see in front of us here today. I think that if we didn't take advantage of this opportunity, our citizens will be asking us several years down the road why we didn't because there's so much energy headed that way with commercial development and other things that will follow, so.
Well, we, we've invest, I, I consider this personally, just from business, this is an investment.
Exactly.
And, and as we've seen with George Ritchie and several other roads that we've invested in, we see taxpayer dollars coming back to the citizen, okay? And so the long term is, we're taking this amount of acreage that today is just timberland, and I'm not saying just timberland, but it's not developed. And it's not on tax rolls for a very big, big number. When that's developed fully out, that's gonna be a big number. We already know the first project is a multimillion-dollar facility that's being proposed in there now. Okay, anybody else have anything? Mr. Frost.
About the contract, based on the $3 million, we would do 1 million, and Mr. Van Dusen would do 2 million. If it goes over, then we split the difference, and that's where that $2,34,500 comes in.
Yep.
So. And then if it gets too high, then we can go back, contract says we can go back and renegotiate and see if we still wanna do it, either side.
Once we get the actual bids.
Once we get the actual bids in.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, may I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Have a motion, second in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. B is a resolution authorized developer participation. Mr. Willard?
Yes, sir, that is a vote for the council to consider the actual authorizing and going into contract in the developer participation agreement.
Okay, anybody have any questions on that? Mr. Allen.
This money that we're talking about spending will be out of the reserve, the general fund reserve?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's right, you weren't here when we had that meeting.
Yes, I was.
No, you weren't.
I just wanted to make sure.
May I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Have a motion, second in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Okay, consider ordinance amending budget 2013-14 fiscal year. Mr. Willard?
Yes, sir, this is.
Well, hang on a second, is it, I've got Mr. Willard here. Is it Kevin's project? Okay, Mr. Willard, go ahead.
Mayor, you'll remember in council that Leadco went into contract, and they closed yesterday on the I-20 Estes Holiday Inn, Old Holiday Inn property. And we have secured bids for the demolition and reclamation of that property. And we are asking the council to commit up to $125,000 to put into that project with Leadco on the reclamation of the property.
Okay, questions? Questions? Miss Ann, did you have a question?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The 125,000, now is this a initial max? Or where does this fit in the whole scheme of from, from start to completion?
Well, the purchase price was $800,000, and the demolition and reclamation costs are $898,000. There's closing costs and different costs. The total's gonna be $1,872,155. And Leadco has committed $1,808,000. So that leaves a shortfall of $72,000. We're asking for 125,000, just in case there are any incidentals that we've missed here.
Gremlins. Gremlins are bad, that's the.
And depending on, on those, it may turn out that we don't have to spend that, but.
Yes, well, that, that answers, because Mike, in other words, this is a final, finished figure, so this should be our total exposure on this project.
Yes, sir.
All right.
And, and again, Sidney, that is to bring this property, a valuable piece of property. You know, we went through the I-20 corridor task force studies. That was the number one item on their recommendations. When we get that piece of property cleared off and shovel-ready, our, our goal is that we will get that money back, okay?
No, I remember very well.
As part of selling that property.
Yeah, when this was the prime location for this, for Longview.
Yeah, I moved here in 1981, Mr. Hill, and that Teddy's was a nice restaurant. I mean, matter of fact, Sunday brunch, I was about the only place to go at that time.
Smells like chicken.
Yeah, it does. No, no, they say it smells like money. Okay, go ahead, Richard.
I'd like to speak out in favor of this for the same reason that we're, that I favored the other project. I'd also like to compliment Leadco. They worked diligently with the owner, who was an irascible sort of guy, I can tell you, and that's the nice things to probably say about him. He's just a difficult person to deal with. And then there's the whole question of the asbestos remediation, which was a bit of a surprise. So Leadco worked hard to get to where we are. I'm glad to hear they closed it, Mr. Willard. And I think this is a, a small amount of money for us to invest in, as the mayor said, for something that's gonna be a huge return. And I'm as excited about this project for I-20 and South Longview as I am for the other project we're gonna be talking about tonight. So it's a great idea.
Good deal. Okay, let's go to item D, consider resolution authorize city manager negotiate and execute agreement. Mr. Willard?
Yes, sir, this is an agreement that we would have with Longview Economic Development Corporation toward the reclamation and the cleanup of the property.
Okay, questions? If not.
We didn't vote on C, did we?
Yeah, we did. Okay, let's go ahead and do D. Can I have a motion on D?
So move.
Move, second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. C, may I have a motion?
So move.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. E, ordinance amending section 33.7. We're gonna have Kevin Cummins on that.
Thank you, Mayor. City council members, as Mr. Willard did on the first two, these two are actually connected. And if you would allow me to, I'd like.
Can we connect vote? It's always connect, why can't we just have one vote on, on these things?
And, and they're just two separate, one, for the other two, the budget had to be amended to have money. And then we had to authorize an agreement to actually use that, that money.
So you're telling me the smaller group of lawyers as we have, they can't figure out a way to put that in one motion?
We suffer with our own gremlins.
Normally, we have two votes on these items, we just don't have them at the same meeting. So normally, you approve a budget, and then later we come to you with a contract, weeks or months later. But in this case, the contract and the budget just happened to be at the same meeting.
All right.
In this last case, the ordinance has to be amended.
I was gonna call him Mr. Finley, but Mr. Ray, we appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Good job. Okay, Kevin, go ahead. Sorry for the interruption.
Not a problem, not a problem at all. The, as I said, the two items are related. If you will let me, I'll do a little bit of background just to show where we are today and why. And then we'll handle each item individually. Back in 2011, Pinnacle Housing approached the city about partnering on a tax credit program, tax credit project for some low-cost housing here in town. We had met them earlier, about two years before that, because of another project that they've tried. They put together basically what we call the Amberwood Apartment Complex or Project. It's located at Hawkins and McCann, kinda behind the Shell Station Convenience Store, if everybody knows where that is. At the time, we put something together in February 2011, or 2012, and the city council passed a resolution to participate in that project to the tune of $156,000. And the reason it was $156,000 is because we had planned on using home funds from HUD to do that, and we had to meet their criteria, which was $2,000 per unit. There was 56 units. So you wound up with the, sorry, 78 units. So you wound up with the amount of 156. HUD preliminary said that was okay, we're gonna move forward. But when we asked for funds, when, when housing, Martell and Parker are here this evening, when we asked for the funds to be released to do this partnership, they said that it was denied. Basically, that the, there was an environmental concern, as well as some, I think, some technicalities on the application from the applicant, that maybe they could answer a little better than I can, if you would like to go in that. So that's kinda the background, where we were. We said we wanted to partnership with them. We thought we were gonna be able to use HUD funds. That was back in February 2012. When it came down to it, HUD said no. If we want to move forward with this case, if we want to continue our partnership with them, we have to find another way of doing it. And the first thing that we have to do is to amend our, our chapter 33, which is our local policy dealing with 380 agreements. 380 agreements is a very common way for us to, to work with developers, to provide them with some economic incentive. So if we want to continue forward, we need to amend that chapter of the local ordinance to be able to allow low-cost housing projects to be part of it. And that is the first one.
Okay, so we're not, we're not committing 132,000 with the action item E?
No, sir, that, that will actually come down to F.
Okay, all right, everybody's clear on that? Okay.
That'll permanently redo the ordinance?
It will add low-cost housing permanently, yes. As a, as a project that qualifies.
Okay, any other questions? If not, may I have a motion? Have a motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Now, resolution authorize in 380 agreement.
Yes, sir. Now, this is a resolution to authorize the city manager, his designated, to actually enter into the agreement with Pinnacle on this Amberwood apartment project. The amount is now 132,000. It's different than the 156 that we originally said. The reason for that is, to be able to qualify for the tax credits through the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs, you, you have to do just a certain percentage. And now we're down to, I believe, with 132, that's 66 units. And they're still gonna have 78, but the other ones will be market rate. So that gives you a little bit more of a widespread clientele, if you will. So that, that's a good thing, too. Now, again, this amount is $132,000. Pinnacle has been very kind to us and said that we can wait a little bit. We can work with you on how to fund this thing. So we're, we're trying something a little bit different. We're actually saying that we're gonna try to fund this in the 2000 fiscal year, 2014-15. And we're gonna use primarily water, sewer, and drainage funds to do that. And it's, and the amounts are 124,000 for water and sewer improvements, and then 8,000 for drainage, or storm sewer, if you will. So that's where the dollars come from. It'd actually be 2014-15 fiscal year. That gives us time to budget it out.
Okay, questions? I'm gonna, I'm gonna save you for last, 'cause I don't, go ahead.
This is my district. I toured this facility recently with Lisa Stevens, the lady that's the Pinnacle representative. This is a really nice project. This is not, this is for working folks. And this is a really good project. This city needs a project like this. I'd like to see more efforts like this. It's a quality product. I think anyone here would, if you needed an apartment like that, you'd enjoy living there. They're taking a lot of pride in what they're doing. And the fact that HUD threw us a curve is not anyone's fault at the city, it's just the bureaucrats in Washington. And again, as we discussed with some other things tonight, I think it's a relatively small investment, and I'm glad to hear we can push it back a year, for a great return and a multimillion-dollar project in the city.
That is quite a, a long ways along as well. I mean, it's very far along. Anybody, Garrett?
Mr. Cummings, I got one. I got a question here. HUD denied this because of some environmental concerns? And the developer failed to meet some guidelines? Can you talk a little bit about that?
I can talk mostly about the environmental concern, because it, it's a piece of property just to the west there. There is a pumper station, a gas compression station. It's been there for a number of years. And there was a complaint lodged about the complex being so close to that. At the federal level, we didn't have much luck in explaining that this is East Texas. We are in the oil field, we are in the gas fields. We know these projects, we see them all the time, we're used to them. And it doesn't deter people from building houses right next to them, much less apartment complexes. Fell on deaf ears in the, on the HUD level. But locally, state level, that argument made a lot of sense. And Mr. Manley participated as well as myself, and we were able to, to drive home the fact that this is Longview. We know this stuff. We, we were with it all the time. Now, the technicalities, I don't know that very well. You know, HUD's regulations are monumental. And I, I can't figure out what they might have said that they did wrong. Carter, Martell, if you have some idea, I'd, I'd be happy for you to answer.
Sure.
What I'm trying to get to, Martell, is there was some, the developer didn't follow some type of guideline?
Basically, with a project of best odds and scope, as it was mentioned before, we had to do an environmental assessment. And before we could request, before we could get approval for the release of funds to fund that project, that environmental review had to be done. It was done, but the builder had moved dirt and started clearing out the land and took down trees and all that kinda things. So it was deemed that we could not assess if the natural habitat of any endangered species had been disturbed or not. And with that being an irreversible type of finding, then HUD gave us a vote of no confidence to move forward. There were some other concerns that had been addressed in the environmental assessment initially. And HUD did, after they reviewed it, came back and had some concerns. Those were able to be addressed or able to be remedied, such as the noise, the noise from the street, the cars passing by, the combustible tanks, and I think there was a gas station nearby. Those were able to be addressed, but since the ground had been disturbed and we cannot basically verify if the natural habitat of any endangered species had been disturbed, then HUD gave us a vote of no confidence and would not agree to release the funds for that project.
Okay, all right, thanks. You were supposed to go walk that property to make sure there wasn't any spotted owls and stuff up in there. But, but. Listen, I mean, look, let's, let's, let's call it what it is. Our CDBG funding has been decreasing every year for the last four or five years. And, and that's just what it is. And that's just what it is. I mean, they're gonna find any and every possible way not to fund projects. And that's just what it is. Okay, do I have any other questions about that? Okay, Ms. Allen?
Yes, sir. The project is certainly moving along, driving by and looking at it. I didn't stop and walk the property, but driving by and looking at it, I'd say they are 70, 60, 70%. I mean, the structures are up.
Yes, sir, it is framed. I'm not sure it's all dried in. I would probably be a little less, but pretty close.
Okay, I don't think there's any question, this project will be completed. The developer's not gonna stop at this point. What the, in my opinion, what the developer did, he chose to get in bed with the federal government. And in doing so, something happened along the way. And now he's asking the people of Longview, Texas, to come in and pay $132,000 because he didn't do his correct procedure when he was initially applying for this project. I am, I have no desire whatsoever to give him $132,000 because he went to bed with the federal government and came out on the short end. Thank you.
That sounds terrible. But the reality is, we committed $156,000 when we initially did this project.
Not of our money, HUD money, HUD money. This was not, we did not commit a dollar out of our general fund to go into this. This was all HUD money coming from the federal government. Correct? Correct.
Okay. All right. Okay.
To be spent in Longview.
So that makes it our money.
No, it's not our money, it's federal money.
Which are tax dollars, we pay those too. Okay, go ahead, Richard.
Okay, so, Mr. Allen, I have to really disagree with you vehemently on this. If you're against the federal government participating in this, it was an IRS tax credit from the federal government.
I'm not against the federal...
Let me finish. IRS tax credit that funded this. So the city and these people at Pinnacle took advantage of a program with the IRS tax credit was put in place to provide and create a project, just like what we have. The complaint, the source of the complaint was suspect. And I see Ms. Stevens here, she probably wouldn't say what I know. And that is that it probably wasn't a righteous complaint from someone who was really concerned. It was someone just trying to mess the project up. This project was approved twice by HUD, both at the local level and the regional level, and twice, and only after the same company that complained the first time to make it be reviewed, complained a second time for the same purpose, after it'd been approved twice, goes to some bureaucrat in Washington, and it was the month after the West explosion. Now, you can say that's just coincidence or not, but why was it approved twice by people, as Mr. Cummings said, no East Texas, no Texas? And then someone's sitting on their fanny, they wrote, how many pages was the response? 110 pages? They wrote a 110-page response just to say no. So much like what we've talked about earlier, I think $132,000 for an investment, as an investment in a project like this, is money well-spent, and it's not because anybody did anything wrong. And it's because of a HUD bureaucrat who doesn't know Texas.
Okay, I'm counsel, I'm gonna ask for a motion on this item. I think everybody else, anybody else have anything? Okay, may I have a motion? Have a motion? Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passes. Okay, let's do it again. We'll show our hands, since we have two people opposed. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of those opposed, raise your hand. Okay, motion passes. Thank you. All right, items of community interest. Hello, Mr. Sims. How you been doing?
Well, I've been doing pretty good.
All right.
Football games haven't been going our way.
I don't know.
BYU put it on Texas.
I thought you were talking about Pine Tree or Longview or Spring Inn?
Oh, no, Pine Tree, I'm proud of them.
There you go.
Two wins in a row.
What's that?
Two wins in a row. That hasn't happened for 20 years.
They're looking good, they're looking good. Garrett?
I got a chance to visit the new Pine Tree Stadium out on West Loop 281. And that is a state-of-the-art type of facility they have there, Mr. Mayor.
It is.
And it's really enjoyable to see those kids out there playing the game, and I enjoyed it myself.
Well, I was glad you were there, on my behalf as well, Garrett. Appreciate it. Okay, Mr. Frost?
Oh, one thing I'd like to bring up, you know, we're starting on the intersections on Hawkins Parkway. And so everybody have some patience now, and be careful going along there. There's gonna be the intersection at 259, and eventually this Fourth Street extension. So be on the lookout and be careful.
I want to thank the Zonta Club for having me this week to do the presentation I do about how the city works, what a real fine group of ladies. And I think my mother would have been a Zonta Club member.
Did you buy a hat?
They didn't ask me to buy a hat.
Really? What about a blanket?
Or a blanket. Mrs. Mother say that's not good.
Okay, excuse me, Ms. Will.
Secondly, I just want to say, you know, I'm a huge cheerleader for Longview, and how exciting it is to see all the many projects that we have going in all parts of the city. It's just another example of how things, how great things are in Longview, all the good things that are happening here, and how our friends in Smith County, I think, are jealous because I think we're pulling away from them in a lot of ways. Lastly, I want to thank everyone for all the prayers. I've got pretty big shoulder surgery coming up on Tuesday. It's gonna knock me out for a while, I'll probably miss a meeting, maybe two, but I think just one. And it's, getting old's not for sissies, I'm falling apart, so. Surgery's on Tuesday.